Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll open the City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 28, 2020, and as you continue to see, we're in multiple environments here, in-person, virtual, et cetera. So I appreciate everybody's patience, especially with me, that I have multiple things to watch. So I'll try and keep the order as my colleagues want to chime in on any issues. But as we see, the numbers continue to be a concern. So I thank everyone for doing their part and ask that everybody stays the course and resets their compass and keeps focused on being safe. So with that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and Alderman Dunn will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, and Brian, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll.
Dunn?
Here.
Doorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Peacock?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. So good evening again, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, again, like to welcome everyone at attendance, those viewing and on your mobile devices. Respectfully welcome all your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that you're sharing those with fellow Davenporters and everybody in the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask your participation. Please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a greater place for everyone. If you have your cellphone, please make sure it's on silent or off, just so it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you wish to address the council, when it's time, please come to the podium. If I'd love you to give your name and ward or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address me or the council as a whole, not any one individual. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and be respectful. We'll be respectful with you. Please be respectful with us. Thank you. Will an Alderman now move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for October 14, 2020?
Yes.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. That's approved. Okay, is Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, any update this evening?
Just a quick reminder that Halloween is Saturday, so trick-or-treat hours in the City of Davenport are 4:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you for that, and then a reminder, as our little ones, or bigger ones, I guess, are out and about, please be cognizant of driving and safety and et cetera. The later hour parts of that will be getting dark, so everybody help with watching out for each other and taking care. And then, of course, during COVID, well, I think I've been talked to a lot of people, kind of come up with innovative ways that you disperse the candy to our young folks. I'd ask you to think about how you do that. So thank you, Ms. Spiegel. Will an Alderman move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for October 21, 2020?
Move the report.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one appointment and two proclamations this evening. The one appointment tonight is for the Design Review Board, and Brittany Clarkowski is the new appointment. I'll accept a motion. And a second. Motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That's approved. Thank you, Brittany, for serving, willingness to serve. The two proclamations, one, we have First National First Responders Day and National Adoption Day. The first one, National Responders Day, Alderman Dunn will read, and if Chief's not here, I know he had something to do, so we'll get it to him later. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's truly an honor to read this proclamation tonight. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the members of the first responders organizations undergo significant education, training, and professional sacrifice in order to achieve their expertise required to respond to emergency situations, and whereas first responders risk their lives on a daily basis to protect and serve our community and are vital to maintain safety and order in times of crisis, and whereas first responders are the first and best defense against emergencies that threaten our community, and whereas first responders provide an invaluable service to those in our community by performing their duties 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas Davenport residents place their trust in these individuals, not just on this day, but every day of the year, now more than ever is the perfect opportunity to express appreciation and recognition to our health, safety, and well-being of our dependent and our dependence on commitment and steadfast devotion of our first responders. Whereas the elected officials extend a special thank you and recognition to the City of Davenport Police, Fire, Public Works Departments, as well as the public safety organizations that also support our residents. Those organizations include Medic EMS, Scott County Emergency Communications Center, Emergency Management Agency, and our local healthcare and utility service workers. Now therefore, we Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council do by here declare our appreciation to the first responders and proclaim October 28, 2020 as National First Responders Day in the City of Davenport, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the dedication, hard work, and personal sacrifices of all first responders dated this 28th day of October 2020, and I move the proclamation."
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign, and this proclamation is now, we'll make sure we get it to Chief Skorsky. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn, and I'll just add, take a moment in the time of COVID here, as we ask these folks to continue to do their job, especially our first respondent folks and our healthcare providers, if we could give a great round of applause to the work they do. Very good. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next one is National Adoption Day, and I read this one just because it's special to me. So, "Whereas the City of Davenport, Iowa recognizes the importance of giving children permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption, and whereas more than 110,000 children in the United States foster care system are awaiting to be adopted, and whereas more than 100 children in Iowa are waiting for, are awaiting permanent families, and whereas to help these children find permanent nurturing families, the local courts of Scott County will recognize and observe National Adoption Day Friday, November 6, 2020, to finalize the adoptions of local children and join other organizations to celebrate all adoptions, and whereas this effort, along with similar celebrations in all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and Puerto Rico will offer children the chance to live with stable and loving families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through adoption. Now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the City, Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim November 6, 2020 as National Adoption Day in the City of Davenport, and in doing so, urge all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness about the importance of adoption dated this 28th day of October 2020." And Eric Severoot will meet me at the podium, and I'll present this proclamation. I'll accept a motion to approve in a second. In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. On behalf of the National Adoption Day, the local committee, I want to thank everybody for this proclamation. We've been doing this for several years now in Scott County, and it is a special day over at the courthouse for us, especially the adoptive families, and most importantly, the children that get a place in loving homes and get provided a opportunity to grow up in a home that provides them with, you know, what everybody wants, safety and loving parents, and an opportunity to grow and develop. So it's a big deal. It's one of the fun things we get to do over there at the courthouse. This year's going to be different, obviously, because of the situation we're in. Mr. or Mayor Mattson is going to attend and read the proclamation, so we're just going to have some kind of a celebration, just won't be like last year. So I'll tell you a little bit about last year, though. We did have quite a turnout. We probably did 15 adoptions last year, 150 people there, and following on the last proclamation of First Responders Day, we had members of the Davenport Fire Department and Davenport Police Department there cheering on the adoptive families after they were adopted, which was a new thing and really enjoyed by the kids, especially, and the parents too, actually. So just want to thank everybody in the city for their involvement, and we appreciate your assistance in this, and we'll see you on next Friday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. And we have one presentation this evening, Davenport Public Works. We'll talk about snow, and the presentation to tell us there won't be any, but in case there is, what we're doing about it. So Ms. Gleason, please.
If you all want to have very happy no-snow thoughts, I would appreciate that. Okay, so this is going to be repetitive for some of you. Tried to just kind of keep it to the main basics, and of course, if you have specific questions about the snow plan, please feel free to set up a time with me, and I'm happy to go through it in more detail. So there's really no changes to the snow routes outside of the two minor changes you all approved over the course of this year that were recommendations from residents, but in, by and large, they're the same. So if we have advanced warning of a ice or snow event and conditions are ideal, we will brine and pre-treat the roads ahead. If we don't have that advanced warning, or conditions aren't ideal, we just start with the snow removal itself, always working with the primary and secondary snow routes to ensure that emergency vehicles can get to the majority of homes within a couple of blocks. And then, once we've cleared the primary and secondary routes, we do move into the residential areas if there is enough accumulation. So this is just what the pre-treatment looks like. Usually, the first time we do this, we get a lot of questions, what are the lines on the road, what you doing? So just as a reminder, this is what it looks like. And as I said, this just kind of buys us extra time, really, so it generally helps the snow from sticking to the road for that first little bit, and then it does make removal a bit easier once we are able to get on the road. And it's around $3,400 to perform this activity and material. Salt delivery is underway. We've received about 2/3rds of it so far. The remaining bit of it will be coming next week. So once we have the full order, we'll have around 12,000 tons of salt to start the season, and we do have availability for supplemental orders if we do need it. We do make the brine on-site, and our training has begun. We do have quite a few new Teamsters this year, so with those that are new, you may see trucks with blades driving around. They're not driving aimlessly. They're learning routes. They're learning how the blade feels on the truck. For people that have never done this before, that's a really important thing for safety. So a snow emergency is generally declared if we're going to have an ice event or we're expecting a large amount of accumulation. This really just makes the snow removal much more efficient if our plows don't have to worry about running into cars, and they can clear curb-to-curb during the event. If we do declare a snow emergency, we, and we will send ticketing teams out. How we handled it last year is, once we got to the second and third event, if people were receiving more snow tickets, so they had multiple snow tickets on their vehicle, we did tow a couple vehicles last year for those offenses. I know that's been a big gripe in the past. And then, obviously, if we do need a downtown removal event, that does generally result in towing as well. So this is just a graphic of why we declare a snow emergency. It is really, especially on these narrower roads, a big challenge. If you imagine this scenario in the dark, it's incredibly difficult for those drivers to get down some roads. If we do get to four inches or more of accumulation, that does trigger a downtown removal event. So this is an event that's specific to the downtown, and we're actually physically picking up the snow and taking it away. So this is not in place of plowing. Regular plowing will occur during the event and after the event. The downtown snow removal generally doesn't occur until all the residential roads have been clear, and we try to work with the downtown partnership on the ideal day to pick up the snow. For them, they generally prefer that we do it like on a Sunday or Monday night, just to try to avoid disruption on the busier days of the week. So again, we continue seeing those challenges in the downtown with higher volume of residents, noise complaints. I'm sure those of you who live downtown can hear the clatter of it when it comes through. And, you know, we're just, with the amount of development, there are fewer places for businesses to put snow and for us to put the snow in between events. And just as a reminder, we did have an instance, I don't remember if it was last season or the season before, where it took us about two weeks before we were able to do the downtown snow removal event, because when we get to those negative wind chills, our equipment that runs that event can't operate in those temperatures. So another complaint we get is the driveways and sidewalks. As a reminder, we generally try to give 24 hours for sidewalk removal. We do focus primarily on bus routes and school zones as we do enforcement, but we do enforce based on calls and what our inspectors see when they're out in the field as well. And if someone is abated for a snow removal, it's usually a minimum of a $90 charge. So finally, really, we're pushing this again right now. Please sign up for alerts. People always like to tell us they don't know there's a snow emergency, but there's lots of great ways to find out about it. There's a giant banner on our webpage. You can sign up to get a text and email, whatever your delivery preference is. And then, just wanted to give one quick study, flood study status slide, since we're talking about weather, I thought it all goes together, right? So the operations review, and then they came back for a follow-up. That is well underway, so we should be getting some feedback on our operational plan shortly. And then, you will all see a lot of communication rolling out here in the next one to two weeks to participate in that online engagement portion. So we will be doing a press release to let people know that this engagement's coming. We're really hoping that a lot of residents participate, give us their feedback, whether they're just a recreational user of the riverfront, or whether they, you know, are living in the flood plain. The 1,100 properties that are in the flood plain and that had the elevation survey are actually getting direct mail or postcards to let them know the results of the elevation study and encouraging them to participate in the survey. So there'll be some direct outreach as well as the virtual outreach. And we're still on schedule per the original one we presented when we awarded the contract. So any questions on either of those things?
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. I just want to say, as our citizens are always discussing and trying to measure and decide, well, it wasn't a snow emergency, I didn't move my car. Ladies and gentlemen, please, if it snows and it accumulates and it's becoming an issue, please move your car. You don't have, you know, or if you're so concerned, pay attention. And when there's a snow emergency, if you're parked on an emergency route, you need to get your car off so we can do what we need to do, and it's because of safety we do this so our emergency folks can get through. So thank you for this briefing. You've done, this, this, this plan has evolved, and it's, it's really good, and we have a great way to address things and, and alert systems, so I'll echo, please, everyone get on that system where you can get alerted. I have one small, short question from Alderman Doorman.
Thank you, Nicole. In my short time on council in the winter, I feel like I got this next question kind of frequently, so I was wondering if you could maybe help answer it beforehand, but a lot of elderly people were concerned about not being able to get their sidewalks taken care of in a quick fashion, and they also were worried about maybe they could get it done once, but then the snowplows would come in and fill them in, and they were kind of, felt like they were out of luck there, and they couldn't address those issues. How, how should elderly people go about maybe getting assistance with getting their sidewalks done?
Yeah, so last year, we did have a partnership with St. Ambrose, and I believe they started a club to help with that. And then another thing we did is, I know through our social media, we encouraged people to use Nextdoor if they needed help or saw neighbors that need help and just kind of neighbors helping neighbors. If there, if your driveway is recovered, the city has a policy, doesn't generally come back. If you feel like there was an issue that was extenuating, please call, and we always do have a supervisor check it out to make sure, kind of quality control perspective. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Nicole. Hopefully, we have enough snow all winter, and it won't be an issue.
Yes.
That's the way, yeah, we're jinxing ourselves here. Nicole, do we still have the snow desk and the snow number?
Yes, we do. It's generally our same as our public works number, so what happens is that they do get one of our clerks during normal business hours, but then that phone rolls over directly to our snow supervisor after hours.
Roger that. And you have one more comment from Alderwoman Dickman.
And you can also expand on this if you want two more. The wino, I think is what it's called, when the plow moves the snow and it creates a little pile at the edge of the driveway. I've gotten comments in the past asking if the drivers can like make a second pass, basically, to try to clear that. I think that's like 40,000 parcels. I'm just going to let you finish the story of why we can't do that, even though we would love to.
Yeah, so a couple, a couple things with that. That's called the windrow, and there are some suggestions online about where to place snow, depending on what side of the street you're on and whatnot, to, to try to avoid that windrow. And in some cases, we do have like left-angled and right-angled plows, so depending on what plows on what route and what equipment's available, that can present different challenges for the windrow, but, but there are resources online kind of advising on the best place to put your snow to avoid it. And we do have 40,000 parcels, so it would be impossible to send crews back out to, to clear everyone's driveway.
That good to Alderwoman Dickman? Okay. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Just, I did get a lot of calls about this last year, and what I found online, I didn't, the person I called back didn't appreciate me calling back with the suggestion, but what they basically said is, ahead of where the plow's coming, when you're, when you're, when you're clearing your driveway, clear that 10 feet as well, and then when it hits that, it'll, the snowplow will hit a void, so there will be nothing in front of your driveway. But, and there's, there's some very good pictures online about that, so, from Pennsylvania, he gets a lot of snow, so, just a little, a little thought, a suggestion there. Thank you.
Good thought. Alderman Condon?
I was just going to say, if, there's a lot of people looking for some cheap entertainment in the absence of all our great downtown parades. If you've never been awake during a downtown snow removal, it's actually very riveting. So set your alarm clocks and come join us.
Seeing no one else, hearing no one else? Thank you, Ms. Gleason.
Thank you, yep.
Okay, next. Next, we have some updates from council members and mayor. I have a couple things, just to keep you updated on our work with ending veteran homelessness in Davenport. So a couple thoughts that came to me, and I've talked with the, our good friends from the VA and the Community Resource and Referral Center. So we met veteran homeless providers, and I and others met with the United States Agent Agency Council on Homelessness two weeks ago. The final application was submitted to effectively end veteran homelessness. It was reviewed and received well. This is the last step in the approval process. We hope for a very positive response in any day now. This, this indicates that we have an effective, great system in place to ensure veteran homelessness is rare, brief, and non-recorning, mainly that everyone is taken care of. So I just want to give you an update, and I'm anticipating any day now a positive response. And then, as you saw, our wonderful friends from the Downtown Partnership gave us a briefing yesterday. I called them at the end because I had just got it. They had said we probably have approval, but it wasn't official, but yesterday, I officially got the letter from the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs that the Davenport Downtown Commercial Historic District is approved, and I actually have the letter here. So from Second Street to Fifth Street, Perry Street to Western is now our downtown Davenport Commercial Historic District, and that's a big deal, and just wanted to let them, everybody know that. So, thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to take a minute to recognize a citizen who has gone above and beyond. Jim Hepner has been on the Citizens Advisory Committee for 25 years. He began in July of 1995, and he has recently resigned that position, and I think it is worthy of praise to recognize somebody for serving their city for that long. If you don't know, the Citizens Advisory Committee assists in the administration of the Community Development Block Program. They review all of the applications every year, and then they recommend, make recommendations to the City Council on how to spend those dollars. When I came on board, Jim gave me a call, and he said, Alderman Gripp, I've, I've served on the CAC, my term is coming up, and if you'll have me, I would love to continue to serve. And he has done that these last three terms, and he's finally to the point where he's going to move on. But he's very passionate about the Citizens Advisory Committee and its mission. He rarely missed a meeting, and he was a dedicated public volunteer. So Jim, I'd like to thank you for your 25 years of service to the city. No question, Davenport is better because you've lived here, and we've lucky, we are lucky to have you serving our citizens for 25 years. Thank you again. Best wishes to you and your family. Thank you, Mayor.
Very nice. Let's see. Alderman Doorman?
Thanks, Mayor. Topic that is passionate to me, that I enjoy doing in the summer when things are warm, is lowkick softball. And I saw that Visit Quad Cities announced that we have a new opportunity for a corporate cup opportunity here in Davenport, and so I was wondering if Chad would be able to give more details on that program and kind of start getting the momentum rolling behind that one.
Mr. Dyson, are you on? Did you hear that? If not, we'll, we'll make sure he updates you next week. Is that okay, Alderman Doorman? We'll just have him make sure he's prepared.
Yes.
Roger. Okay.
No, that, that will definitely work. If we could just get, it looks like Chad says he's coming back on here shortly, but yeah, I think if we could just keep the momentum rolling on that one, so we can get the high participation numbers with it, that'd be great.
Roger that. He'll, he'll talk to you next time. Okay, cool. I see that he's trying to get back on, but we'll move along. Alderwoman Dickman?
I'm excited to let everybody know that tomorrow in council chambers, I'll be sort of hosting a ward meeting due to the COVID restrictions. We're keeping it at 10 people, but we will have Sergeant Harris and someone who has taken the lead in terms of neighborhood organization, talking about the Good Neighbor Project and some of the efforts going on within the second ward. So tune in or come by if you feel like you want to be there, but otherwise, it will be broadcast, and it's going to be some good information, so hopefully can get a good set of people tuning in. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Anyone else?
6:30 tomorrow.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no one? Okay, we'll move on. Now we'll move to the items on the discussion agenda. There's a couple. So the first one is a first consideration of an ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $50 million general obligation corporate bond Series 2020B and for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Is there any public with comment concerning this? Okay, hearing and seeing none? There's a motion and a second to move it through first consideration. I'm going to call up our HR Director and CFO to give us a quick update, because there is a change as she briefed us last week. Ms. Merritt?
Yes, Mallory Merritt, CFO. We did have our bond sale today. It was very successful. The market was very favorable to us in that transaction. John Burmeister with PFM is actually on the line with us today. He's going to talk you through the actual terms of that transaction, and then after that, I'll be up, be back up to talk about the procedure.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt. Mr. Burmeister?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
All right, very good. So within your packet or even on your screen, you should have a results of sale. I'm pleased to tell you that the rating agencies did reconfirm your AA3 and your AA ratings, so that's a positive in light of the your AA3 and your AA ratings. So, that's a positive in light of the pandemic environment that we're experiencing at this point. You can see the results of sale are three pages long. We ended up getting five bids from underwriters. You can see Piper Sandler came in at a true interest rate of a 1.5699%. And if you go to the second page, you can see Robert W. Baird with their consortium of underwriters, there's actually 32 additional underwriters here. And I just point out to all the underwriters in all the different locations that they're coming from all over the United States, as we've seen in the past. You can see they came in at 1.59%. And then last but not least, on the very last page, we had JP Morgan, Citigroup, and FHN coming in at 1.62 to a 1.65%. And you can see here that we did get a premium on these bonds, and we were able to decrease par amount of the bonds, to resize to give the city the proceeds that you needed. And so, we decreased par amount of the bonds to $21,675 from what we went out with this morning at $24,665,000. And you can see that resulted in a final true interest rate of a 1.601%. I'll open up any questions that you may have, and if there aren't any, we would recommend that you award this to Piper Sandler at a 1.601%.
Very good. Thank you, John. I just want to take a moment and thank Mr. John and Mallory and her team, Lyndon and Basha, and of course, Ms. Spiegel, and my colleagues, Alderman Condon and Alderman Gripp for attending and briefing the members from the different rating agencies. And this is an outstanding sale, and we all should be proud of this. It's one of the biggest things we do, and we were very successful at. So, Ms. Merritt, if you want to come back and tell us what to do here. There is a question. I see Alderman Dorman.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just curious how the sale and the rate we got compares to years past, and maybe to other peer-type cities. Are they seeing the same results that we saw today?
John, you want to take that?
Yeah, they're getting, yeah, they're getting similar results. I would say when we did the spring sale, we had a true interest rate of a 2.07. And here, we're at a 1.6. So, you can see that the interest rates have stabilized, and they're quite a bit lower. And then I did go back into 2019 and 2018, and the 1.6 is below both 18, 19, and more recent sale as well. In fact, I'd have to go back and do a little more research, but this could be one of the lowest borrowing rates that you've received in a long, long time.
And I thank you and Ms. Merritt and her team for the advice to do this now, and to have the wherewithal and future projections to say this is a good time to do it, and it's obviously showing and saving us a lot of money. So, any other questions? Very good. Ms. Merritt.
Right. So, at this time, what we would need is for you to substitute the initial ordinance that was part of the packet with the one that's in front of you and the one that's been shared with the council members that are participating virtually. Once you have made that substitution, then you would be back on the agenda item.
So, I'll accept a motion for substitution. There's a motion and a second. All in favor for substitution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Now, we're back on the original. So, Brian, if you call, any other discussion with Alderman or Alderwoman? Very good. Brian, if you call the roll. Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose? Peacock?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Dorman?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Outstanding. So, that first consideration is approved, and moves to second consideration. Staff recommends that we suspend the rules and do the, approve this on second and third. So, I'll accept, there's a motion to suspend and a second. Roll call for suspension of the rules, please, Brian. Ambrose? Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dorman? McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Peacock?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. So, the rules are now suspended. So, now, accept a motion to approve this on second and third. Motion and a second. Roll call, please, to approve on second and third. Condon?
Yes.
Dickman? Gripp?
Yes.
Ambrose? McGinnis?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. This is adopted, and congratulations on the sale. We have one, another item. We have a resolution now, number two, approving the proposed conveyance of the heritage property located at 501 West Third Street to foundation housing is the petitioner. Is there any public with comment? Please come to the podium, state your name and ward if you're not here from here. We'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson and Alderman and Alderwomen. My name is Jim Richardson. I am president of Economic Housing Development Group. Economic Housing Development Group is a not-for-profit housing agency landlord in the city of Davenport. We rent our properties to low to moderate income individuals and families in the city of Davenport. We have properties in wards two, three, and five. I am not myself a resident of Davenport. Mayor Mattson read my comments into record last week at the public hearing at the Committee of the Whole, and I reiterate those comments today. And I would ask that the city council consider allocating a portion of the proceeds from the sale of the heritage to specifically address the affordable housing needs in the city of Davenport. So, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Public?
Phil Handle, Ward four, and also Nashville, Tennessee. This is regarding the particular property and how it sits on its piece of land. As you may know, on the west side of that property, there's a fairly good amount of green space that is provided to Heritage Plaza. And primarily because I think those folks, it's a good amenity for them. But on the other hand, if on the overall plan of this area, Washington Square Park is reimagined and provided, there's a good piece of land that could be used to actually create housing that fronts Washington Square, the proposed Washington Square Park, and to convey it with that. And that would also mean that that green space would be superfluous. So, I think it would be wise to look at that option, because if we do recreate Washington Square Park, having it ringed with apartments and new construction would be an amenity. And to have, be without that, it's sort of like having a missing tooth in your face. It's just a basic design guideline that if you've got a public square park, you want to have as many apartments or buildings facing it as possible. Not to mention the fact that overlooking that park would mean that that development would be much more desirable and would command a higher rent. So, I think Bruce Berger or someone else in real estate ought to consider cutting off enough of that property that, give that an option, that we'd have a viable space for future apartment building, or perhaps, probably an apartment building on the west end there. Also, I think probably Kyle Carter could, with his experience in real estate and apartment design, could advise that as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Public? Okay, motion and a second. Okay, is there any discussion or comments from my colleagues? Hearing and seeing none? Okay, Brian, please call the roll. Peacock?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Ambrose? Dunn? Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Thank you. That resolution is adopted. Next item is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? Motion and a second. Roll call, please, Brian. Jobchin?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose? Peacock?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Consent agenda is approved. Next item, are there any other ordinance or resolutions or motions? I see none. Next item is any public with business. Anybody from the public? Please come to the podium, step forward. Again, Director Commiss, as a whole, name and ward or address, or if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My name again is Jim Richardson, President of Economic Housing Development Group, who owns approximately 100, or has interest in 167 properties in the city of Davenport. And we are a not-for-profit housing landlord. Given the resolution for the heritage, as I indicated before, I would request that the city consider that a significant portion of that, of those proceeds be dedicated for the affordable housing cause in the city of Davenport. The city of Davenport will be considering in the future the sale of 42 scattered sites. I can tell you that my, our agency, Economic Housing Development Group, along with two other agencies that are not-for-profits, will be submitting a letter of interest to the city of Davenport for the purchase of those properties. That being said, the 42 different properties that are throughout the city of Davenport will likely need a lot of maintenance down the road. You may or may not be aware of what it takes to maintain a property besides just the management of it, but the maintenance long-term, HVAC, roof siding, interior renovations, on tenant move-outs, all take a lot of money. I was asked earlier this week by Leslie Kilgannon, who's the Executive Director of the Scott County Housing Council, to estimate how much $250,000 goes to create or rehabilitate housing. My estimate was that, including the purchase price, that would only get three to six units if it was unleveraged, meaning without debt. If you were to leverage that, $250,000 with debt, that would only take basically six to 15 units. So, with, when you have 42 units being considered for sale, as you can see, $250,000 doesn't necessarily go a long way, and it's going to take a lot of money to maintain and rehabilitate these properties. So, again, I ask that the city council consider that a significant portion of sale, the proceeds from the heritage, be directed toward affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Public? If not, okay. If you're coming, come. If not, we'll move on.
I had the distinct honor and privilege to attend both of the presentations yesterday, both for council members and the Riverfront Improvement Commission about the Downtown Partnership's downtown plan. And I was quite impressed with the amount of work that was put together on that, of the quality of the people that they had working on that. And I have to commend Kyle Carter and his group for funding that. However, I think that overall, there are some things that are lacking from that that I want to bring to your attention to see, for example, if, that the city could independently engage WXY to add some additional items to that. The items that I want to talk to you about today would be these things, but green space. Last year, the city conveyed to a private developer, the green space to the south of the River Center for consideration of a quarter million dollars. I think that we ought to consider not having any loss, net loss of green space in the city, in the downtown area. And I think the perfect location for additional green space would be directly to the south of the public library in the space that's currently used by a former driver bank. It faces south so that the library would be able to take advantage of the natural light that otherwise would be obscured if we built an apartment building next to it. Not to mention the fact that, I've seen cities in Nashville, for example, where they've got a public green space, in this case, it was the roof of their library, quite a nice amenity. You've got Scott County Community College across the street. I think it'd be a great place. Bruce Berger has said that the downtown land is really only worth a quarter million that was paid for. So, for example, this land isn't site-ready, I would think we'd probably be able to get that for the quarter million dollars. And it's something in the middle of our downtown that would be quite, quite desirable, and again, would increase property values in this part of the downtown. The other one I think we probably ought to look at more closely is the transportation building in Plaza to the north of it. I think he had been looking at some spaces for sculptures, and I think that area right there could be a perfect mini Papa John Sculpture Garden right across from the Plaza. And I also spoke, of course, just about a month ago, about the option of creating some type of a public market in that building. I think it's very doable. That building, just as its shell, back of the envelope calculation, is probably worth about $8 million. So, for the city to, just because of a very $100,000 study done by the Downtown Partnership to take down that building without looking at alternative uses, I think would be very rash. And then the last one is, I think, Washington Square, Art Romulus, Washington Square, especially if they're going to be demolishing the building. I'm sorry, what?
Can you move, so you're standing under the mic there?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Kyle Carter was saying that it's a done deal, that the building will be demolished. And I remember when that building was purchased by, the site was purchased by the Y, I think it would be only fair for them to give the city the right to buy it at what they paid for the site, plus inflation, obviously. I think that'd be a nominal fee. I think coming off the bridge would be a much nicer thing to have a park rather than some apartments that now would be nice. 20 years would be tired, and 40 years would be nice, or I think a park would be eternal. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, hearing and seeing no one. Any reports? Motion to adjourn? Motion and a, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We're adjourned. Have a good weekend.